Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen as well as the Wage and Personnel Board, Remote Location Meeting on February 8th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. First on the, is there anybody recording this meeting? Please let us know. And also, the Lake Cam is taping this meeting and is present as well. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20 relating to the 2020 COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the February 8th, 2021 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen should be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, review this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to review at a later date at lakecam.tv. Okay, my name is Rich LaCamera, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and we have Selectmen Fabian.
Present.
And we have Selectmen Day.
Present.
Okay. Selectmen's announcements. A reminder, the town's annual election of April 5th, 2021, nomination papers are available to Town Clerk's office. Please call ahead at 508-946-8800 to make an appointment to request nomination papers. The one has spoken. Papers are available for the following three positions: Selectmen, Finance Committee, Park Commission, and Library Trustee in a one-year unexpired term. For the Park Commission, residents have until February 11th at 5:00 PM to pull papers. The Town Clerk would like to remind residents the importance of returning the census that has been sent out. The census is very important. There's views for several things, including any COVID-19 vaccination clinics. If you do not have received your census, please call the Town Clerk's office. We have the Fire Chief here, Mike O'Brien, and he wants to give an update on the proposed vaccination clinic. So Chief, if you want to do that, please, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Basically, in a nutshell, we're waiting for the vaccine to be supplied to us, but to be able to be qualified to receive that vaccine, there was a lot of preparation, probably hours and hours of preparation by multiple departments and multiple people. It all started with some planning meetings a few months back in the fall and with our eyes toward the news and in all anticipation of delivering the vaccine to our town and to help out our residents. We finally, when the guidance started to come down, we responded to each little bit of information that came and we jumped on it. We started training our firefighters and our paramedics and our ENTs to administer the vaccine. We coordinated with the Council on Aging to build a database of the people that are most vulnerable to COVID-19 and to make sure that they would have first opportunity to get the vaccine. We've coordinated with Health to secure all the equipment that we need to store and deliver the vaccine. And we planned on locations. We even have secured golf carts from LaBarren Country Club so we can provide transportation or assist our seniors from their cars to the parking lots to the clinical location. We've developed and established relationships with two hospitals. We have medical direction, which means a licensed physician is now in charge or unofficially or officially in charge of our vaccination program. We've completed hours and hours of applications with DPH and secured approvals for our vaccine program. So all of this is being done in anticipation to provide the vaccine at the very earliest opportunity. And to say that we're frustrated that we haven't been given that opportunity yet is an understatement. You know, when we're given a rulebook and we're given a plan, we follow the plan, hopefully you get results. And we haven't been able to experience that results, but I promise you that at our first opportunity and when we do get the vaccine, we're not going to waste a day or a moment. We're going to turn around and deliver the program as quickly as we possibly can. The goal of our program is to provide the vaccine to our most vulnerable citizens as close to their home as possible, so they don't have to travel to BCC or Gillette Stadium or some other mass dispensing site, because that's in our citizens' best interest, that's in our seniors' best interest. We don't need them traveling 45 minutes to get a shot when we can provide that right here in Lakeville. And hopefully, we'll be able to obtain that goal shortly. So, thank you.
Just to follow up with the Chief, initially, we were going to do the 85 and older group and there's about 285 and older, which is quite a few. I was surprised there was that many. But, so that's the first goal and, you know, we got everything set up as the Chief said, you know, for the senior center, you know, to help out those seniors to either fill in the application or do it over the phone. We have a hotline that's going to be available and we're actually ahead of the state. We had a hotline available before the state has there already. Nice job, Chief. The situation really is, is the Chief is kind of being nice, to be honest with you, that we put our request in, we're supposed to have our clinic tomorrow. And the Chief put in their request, I'm sorry, the Board of Health Agent put in their request a week ago Monday, and they're supposed to tell you next day, you know, the availability and how much you're going to get. We did not find out until Saturday that we weren't going to be given any vaccine at all. So this morning, once again, the Board of Health Agent submitted again our request and we're supposed to hear again tomorrow. So hopefully, they're going to be giving us some vaccine to be able to vaccinate, you know, the 85 and older. And as soon as that's done, then we'll move to the 75 and older. So the Chief and the Board of Health Agent have put together an excellent plan and we're ready to execute it. Everything is in place, including our freezer and so forth. And so hopefully, that'll happen shortly. But once again, we can't do anything to get vaccine. Does any one of the board members want to make a comment?
Yeah, I would if you don't mind. I'd just like to say, you know, thank you not only to the Chief but everybody else involved. This is, you know, you guys are still doing your day jobs. This is everything over and above that you have to try to coordinate to get this going. And the amount of back and forth and the team effort between yourselves, the Board of Health and everybody else, you know, the parks and everybody to make this happen has been, you know, very gratifying to see. So I know it's been a long road. I know it's frustrating that we're not getting, you know, the answers we want, the goalposts keep moving, but, you know, thank you for everybody in town for, you know, doing this. You guys are certainly showing that we're pretty far ahead of other communities right now and some of the stories I've heard from others, I don't think we're going to have the problems they did. So thank you very much for all of your team's efforts.
Just to reiterate our thanks, like Brian said, all this work is getting done in addition to all the other work getting done. I mean, you know, especially for the Chief, there's fires going on, there's accidents going on, the ambulance is going, so there's so, so much work going on. So I don't know where you're all finding the energy, but I definitely, you know, just reiterate the thanks, so.
Okay, so as the Chief says, we'll be ready when we get it. So thanks, Chief, for all your effort and everybody else involved, as the board members have said. Okay, next on the agenda is a poll hearing, TMLP and Verizon on Melbourne Street, the Board of Selectmen in Lakeville. Notice has been given a public hearing as provided by law. Hearing orders that the Taunton, Middleborough, Taunton, excuse me, Municipal Lightning Plant, Verizon New England, Inc., to be hereby granted a joint or an identical location, the polls and permission to erect, maintain polls and their respective wires and cables to be replaced thereon, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as such companies may deem necessary in the public way or the ways hereinafter referred to as requested in the petition of said company stated 15th of January 2021. All construction under this order will be in accordance with the following conditions: polls shall be of sound timber and reasonably straight and shall be substantially at the points indicated upon the plan marked TMLP number 01152021 dated January 15th to be filed with this petition. It may be attached said polls said by Taunton Middleborough Lightning Plant not to exceed wires and cables and said Verizon New England, Inc. It also said wires and cables should be placed at the height not less than, doesn't say the number of feet from the ground at the highway crossings, you're not labeled then a number of feet from the ground elsewhere. The following polls, the following are the public ways or parts away which the polls refer to shall be erected, a number of polls which may be erected there to this order. Melbourne Street, Pear Savanna, one poll, new location, EL3S, existing poll, EL3S to be located 12 feet, EL4 to be located 27 feet. Okay, so entertain a motion to open this poll hearing, please.
So moved.
Second emotion.
Okay, first of all, does the board have any questions about these new poll and the relocations of the existing polls?
Do we need to vote on opening the meeting?
I'm sorry.
Hearing, yeah.
All those in favor?
AB and I.
AI.
The camera, I, thank you. The board members have any questions on the new poll location or relocating of the two polls?
Not specifically. I was just happy to see one of them is moving away from a corner. That's always nice.
Okay. The abutters, you know, have been notified that this hearing was taking place and I don't see any abutters at this meeting, so I assume there's no comments. Entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second emotion.
All those in favor?
AB and I.
AI.
The camera, I. So I'll entertain a motion to have the board approve this, give, grant the permission to install this poll and move to locations.
So moved.
Second emotion with discussion? Is it normal for them not to include, you know, the number of wires and everything when they're just moving polls, even though there is one new one here?
I can't answer that question, to be honest with you, Tracy. I don't know if you can answer that. No, Tracy.
I'm new, Trace.
Hold on, okay. I'm not sure what you mean by wires, Brian.
So on the, it would be page 11 in our packet you gave us. Essentially, it says, there's a bunch of spaces where it says the number of wires will not exceed and cables and such that appear to be empty.
Um.
And then height in the next section.
I'm not, to be honest with you, I think they're typically filled in. They did this really quickly because they were trying to get on this agenda and they were pushing it to get on, so I'm not quite sure if they just forgot to put that in. I would assume it's standard like all the other ones.
We will make sure that it's included, Brian.
Yeah, as long as they give us the completed.
It will need to be filled in before it's recorded.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, let's make sure we get that.
All those in favor?
Can I just ask, well, not ask, make an observation? This is really, really old, like paperwork. It literally says, "Wherefore they pray that after do notice." I'm just making that observation, how old this paperwork is that.
This is not our document, so you know.
I know it's not our document, but.
Is it a state's form? I see like a very tiny form, I don't know what that says, 559 at the top?
I don't know if it's a TMLP form or?
It's a mass form, it's a mass form, you're right, Brian, it's mass.
I mean, they even call it telegraph wires on the first page.
This is the form that they all use. It doesn't matter if it's TMLP or Midbar GNE.
Interesting.
Well, somebody can send an email to the state to ask them to update it.
I mean, hey, I'm not against praying, but I just.
Nominate, Leah.
Yeah, it's just strange to see that. I don't think the electric company is praying right now that we're going to sign this.
Okay, moving along, all those in favor?
AB and I.
AI.
The camera, I. Okay, next on the agenda is to meet with Josephine Ruth, which I hope I spelled that tone that way, the housing authority to discuss housing lottery of Old Field Estates, Rhode Island Road. Josephine, I believe you're on here.
I am, and yes, you did pronounce it correctly.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm back on for another 40B. This is Old Field Estate, so it is a new development off of Rhode Island Road. It will be four affordable units included in the lottery. They're all three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, and they're being sold for $240,000. You know the prices of homes being built and sold in Lakeville, so that's at least half price of what a typical new construction, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath would be. So this is a really great deal for anyone that qualifies. It does have income limits. A three-person household maximum income is $68,550, goes up about $6,500 for each person. A family of six would be the maximum at $88,350. So the minimum family size for this property would be a family of three in the minimum income, we're anticipating will be about $64,000 to purchase it. The monthly housing expenses will be about $1,650, and that includes the HOA, principal interest, property insurance, taxes, that type of thing. So this would be, I've given Clarinda a copy of it, same thing that you got, and she was thinking of passing them around to all the departments. It'd be a perfect opportunity for a young family, say, a new teacher, firefighter, policeman to get into one of these units. There is a local preference, so two of the units would be for families that either live or work in Lakeville. And, let's see, we have not received any local applications, local requests for an application yet, but you can get it by calling us at 508-947-3824. My extension is four. You can go to our website, which is middleboroughha.org, which stands for Middleborough Housing Authority. And, let's see, the applications do March 22nd by 2:00 and the lottery is scheduled for April 14th. I don't know if you have gone down, seen the units, they're really nice, a lot of high-end finishes, they all have a farmer's porch on the front, a big deck on the back, hardwood floors, first floor and the stairs to the second, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops in the kitchen bath, really, really nice, he's done a good job on them.
Okay. Any of the board members have any comments?
No, not at this time. I believe we did something similar, middle of last year.
Yep.
Yeah, we've done two others in Lakeville over by the T Station and we're probably going to be doing another one maybe later on this year in that area.
Just wanted to add that there is, the asset limit is $75,000 for all assets.
Yes.
That's for cash in the bank.
Cash in the bank, you, if you own a home already, you're going to have to sell it. So first, it is for first-time home buyers, but there are some exclusions that you would still qualify. If you have $100,000 in your 401K, you're not going to qualify. That's why I'm saying it's probably for someone just starting out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that type of thing. I mean, you have two vehicles that isn't considered as asset.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll put it on our website as well, if it's not already out there. I just have one suggestion, Josephine. I did go to your website to look it up, and when it comes up, it says just three letters, OFD.
Yeah, I know, I need to talk to the IT person to get him to change that. I did see that.
Yeah, because, you know, even I said, what's that? You know, I did click on it, though.
And you got all the information.
But, you know, it should say Old Field Estates.
Yes, it should.
Okay, thank you. Okay, unless anybody else, and he has any questions or any other comments, I guess we're all set. We appreciate you coming in. And hopefully, some people in Lakeville will try to purchase them.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, Josephine.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss an open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins and Associates. I know the board has a copy of this, and in my opinion, you know, we have always done this for years this way, and I did check other towns in the area that they do it the same way that we do. So this gentleman has some kind of a firm or something that files complaints with the open meeting law quite frequently. And so I think this is pretty simple. I think all we need to do is that, well, what he was complaining about was that under the meeting of.
Yeah, we were renewing some licenses and I think they said that we may have omitted the addresses of those licensees or applicants at the time.
But anyways, excuse me.
I was just going to say, I want to say I read some of those and I lesson noted and I didn't say the addresses, just because it was probably a three-hour meeting anyways, so next time, we'll say the addresses.
So, excuse me, did you say something, Brian?
I was just going to say, I know we had all the addresses in front of us in our packet, we probably just didn't think to read them on those ones.
So what we'll do is we'll make sure that an attachment is to, for these particular renewals of these licenses is attached to the agenda and we'll respond to that, if that's okay with the board.
Yep, that was my suggestion too, was for those kinds of things, we can always attach it and then that satisfies the open meeting requirement. I believe it satisfies it even if we don't read it, correct? Even if we don't read the address because it's attached with the agenda, it satisfies the requirement, I think.
We're trying to make it easy here.
Yeah, I know.
We didn't want to get into a big debate about this, it's such an issue, but.
We have the minutes, if you want me to read them, but that's okay.
The minutes, they're recorded in the minutes, whatever.
All right, they are recorded in the minutes. Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, if that's okay with the board, then we'll respond to that way, is that all right?
Uh, that's fine for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, discuss health insurance stipend policy. Selectmen Day had asked me to put this on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this was an item that I just been doing some research into, because I, at first glance, I was trying to understand how we ended up with the boards that currently have the insurance availability and stipends, because currently it's limited to ourselves, Board of Assessors and the Board of Health and perhaps also Regional FINCOM. But, you know, when we look at all of our elected boards, I mean, we have others that do so much work. I mean, we start looking at planning board, the parks, I mean, there's just a heck of a lot of work that all these people are doing and they don't qualify for the same things. I'm just curious if this is something that we should revisit, especially coming into a year where, you know, we are not quite sure what the state is going to do as far as funding or how our own budgets are going to be. I mean, I was trying to run some numbers and for the nine seats that are eligible right now, you know, you're looking at, depending on if people are taking individual plans or family plans, anywhere from about $50,000 to $182,000 a year that'd be charged to the town. My understanding is also that, you know, whether or not an individual takes out one claim, zero claims, or one claim or 100 claims during the year, the town's charged the same thing. It looks like at the moment, we have a very small number of individuals utilizing it. I just asked for a number, it looks like it's only a handful right now. I'm just curious, you know, what your thoughts are on, you know, is this fair to other boards that put in a ton of hours and time and weekend time that don't get the same thing? I also do understand that, you know, if the other boards were given even a small stipend, they would then be eligible for insurance. So it's kind of this Pandora's box of, you know, if you give everybody a stipend, you then increase the possibility of insurance costs to the town. So I just want to get your ideas on, you know, is this something that we should revisit? It looked like back in 2011, 2012, the Board of Selectmen at that time actually had rescinded these, you know, benefits, if we want to call them that, and then put them back. And I'm just, you know, curious what your thoughts are on this right now.
First of all, they're not entitled to it unless you're paid, Brian. You're a paid town official, okay? If you wanted to open this up to everybody, they'd have to be paid, number one. Number two is if you open it up to everybody else, it'd cost you a fortune. Just so you know.
Agreed.
Okay.
So, a lot of what I, I can't say no, but what I've researched on this is that the three boards that receive it is because for whatever was going on at the time, they were actually in charge of employees and departments. So for example, while the selectmen is, I guess, obvious because we oversee everything, but the Board of Assessors is another one that they hire, they fire, they handle any issues like the irregular department head would with, for example, like the person, the human resource director. The assessors also have to be certified, so they take a, you know, they have to be, pass an exam in order to be a certified assessor.
Is that the whole board, Leah, or just the principal assessor?
Nope, the Board of Assessors, so all three, within two years have to pass a certification exam. If you don't pass your certification exam, then all you can do is sit on the board, you can comment, but you lose your right to vote. So that is one other reason why the Board of Assessors is included in that. And to show how seriously the state takes that, when we were doing our 10-year reevaluation, I think it was in 2018, I can't even remember the year, there was one Board of Assessor member who, even though that member hadn't even made their two-year mark, which is the limit, because they hadn't been certified, the state wouldn't accept their signature on the 10-year reevaluation. So it's something that the state takes pretty seriously, that certification. I mean, it's a, it's. I mean, it's a, it's like, I know you can do it online now, of course, like a lot of other things. But when I did those classes, it was, you know, four, four eight hour days, which the classes were divided in half. And you can't even sit for the exam unless you had completed seven sections. So anyways, I could go on and on and on, but what of, the Board of Health also was in charge for a long time of hiring and firing. And that is
Not anymore.
Yeah, they're not anymore. I, you know, we could visit that, but that was the, you know, when I had reached back to some of the town elders, some of the folks that had been here for a long time, that was the information that I, that I have had received. Now, the buyout that the insurance stipend there that is in place, my only concern about, you know, removing that right now is our health insurance is 50/50. So let's say we have a young family and, you know, someone may say, geez, I don't really want to work in Lakeville because my insurance is only 50%. Well, they may opt to still work here because they're getting a pretty decent buyout. And I think that's why that was created, so that they wouldn't add to our, because we know it costs more like $20,000 a year, $18,000 or something.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so we figure the buyout, which is 4,500, I think, was a lot cheaper than, you know, the $18,000. So, and I think that unless we can get that percentage up again for new hires, I think one of the only things we have that, as far as that is concerned, is, you know, to attract some of the younger folks is that, let's say they have a spouse who can get health insurance, then they're saying, okay, well, you know, the buyout I get here will help us, you know. That's what I know. I'll defend the stipend all day long. Actually, I debated, Mr. Chair, I debated the chair on the town floor one year about that. I will debate the, you know, and just for, now, I, I don't know if this is true. Perhaps the chair can, can clarify this for us. The school committee, because it's regional, even if
They're not, they're not entitled.
Yeah, they're not a town employee, so they wouldn't qualify for the health insurance anyways. So there really is, you know, a lot, a lot at play here.
So if we go back to the, you know, if we just use the criteria of they acted like a department head, were in charge of hiring and firing, inspectional services has taken over all of that for Board of Health. Is that, is that inaccurate?
Not inaccurate.
That's true.
That is true.
And then from the assessors, I'm not picking anybody. I'm just trying to learn from your description, Leah. It sounds like you could be elected, spend two thirds of your term, not get your certification if you didn't want to, still get your insurance and stipend and just not have a vote.
Um, not, not necessarily true, because if you don't get your certification, then you don't get your stipend. And that's happened too in the assessors where there was a case where someone hadn't gotten their certification in that two year time. And they lost the stipend, which automatically meant they lost any access to health insurance. So that is covered. But you're right, the first two years, they could certainly, you know, get the, and this stipend for the assessors is 175, I think, maybe a little more for the chair. But, you know, the other, the other thing though is, you know, again, I can only speak for myself with this, but, and, and I did say this at town meeting floor, on town meeting floor, when I go places sometimes, when we used to go places instead of virtual meetings everywhere, I personally, you know, thought about submitting for mileage, but I would always say, well, you know what? I'm getting the stipend anyways, you know? I mean, if I have to buy a $150 in cartridge for my computer, I may consider submitting that to the town. But that's why I try to print things at town hall. But I, you know, I know that there's half of people out there like me who don't submit for, you know, but others that do, so that's just another piece of it that, you know.
Sure, but on the other side of that coin, every department has a budget where they could figure those in. We've got, you know, in normal years, we've got this conference we typically go to. This is how far it is. We have these things to do. I mean, that should all be figured in. And somebody that doesn't want to submit reimbursements is almost doing us a disservice because then we don't know what it cost us that year and how do you budget for it in the following year? This is just an area that
Just a question on that, Brian, we do pay for all the conferences. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that.
Yeah, the conferences are paid for, but
I think she's talking about mileage, but
Yeah, like mileage.
We do have, we do have town cars that are available to be used, you know, as well.
Yeah. You know, so, so I do also know some towns have done away with everything. Some towns have reduced it. I, like I said, I'll defend the stipend all day long, especially having done the job now for two years. But I never say no to looking at something and reevaluating it because even I have asked Clarinda for, I think it was when we were doing union negotiations last January, when we started that, she had printed us, she had done some calculations on, you know, what the, I mean, the ideal, it would be ideal if we could raise the town's percentage on the insurance so that the employee isn't paying 50%. I mean, that's really, that's a lot, you know? So I do know a couple of new employees have said to me that, you know, it's really helpful to have that buyout. So we're talking about, you know, three, three different things here. We're talking about the stipend, we're talking about, you know, the buyout. We're talking about you can only get the buyout if you're an employee, so.
Right, and the, and the three boards that get the stipend are considered a part time employee. So then that makes them eligible. And then the stipends are kept under 5,000, so they don't qualify for pension.
Right.
I guess this is just an area where I feel like, you know, one way or another, there's an imbalance on the work that's being performed and who does get things and who doesn't, which it is what it is at the moment. And it is, you know, potential liability if, you know, in a couple of election cycles, all of a sudden you've got nine people all on family plans. All of a sudden, that's 180 something thousand dollars we might not have planned for.
Yep.
It could come quick.
I don't disagree with you. And I don't, you know, I, I never say no to, you know, I wouldn't want to look at this every year because that's almost like, you know, spinning our wheels, making, you know, like the human resource director do a lot of work and, you know. But I never say no to, you know, looking at anything, looking at health insurance costs, looking at, you know, property and town liability insurance. I never say no to, you know, revisiting anything. And then I, you know, typically what I do is I take the information I presented and I make a decision from there. So, but I will tell you, I'm going to defend that stipend for the Board of Selectmen all day.
That's fine.
Brian, I get a, I didn't, do I misunderstand you that you're saying get rid of it? Or you're saying add it for other town officials?
I mean, at this point, I would be, the way it is of already nervous about the liability for nine folks, to expand it to everybody, the cost would be just astronomical if it turned into something that was, you know, that everybody wanted to jump onto. I mean, if, if we're looking at, you know, what is the more fair thing? I'd say start looking at, should we be pulling it back?
Oh, okay, I understood you. I thought you, you were talking about giving it to more people. I missed, I missed.
That would be a very large number, very large.
Thank you. I'm glad.
Yeah, we agree with that. There would probably be a couple commas in that number.
Yeah.
But
Um, I can see if I, so that Clarinda doesn't have to do the work, Brian. I can see if I have some of the work that she did last year. Because what would be, like I said, what would be ideal would be as if the town could afford to pay, you know, 75% of the health insurance and the employee pay 25%. That's what a lot of folks are grandfathered into right now.
Well, I'm just talking about the boards though, not every employee.
I know, but, but, you know, it's a costs, you know, if anything, if we look at anything.
Can I, can I just make one more comment and then you go back to you, Brian? What was discussed during union negotiations was to come up with a high deductible plan, okay, that would reduce the cost of the health insurance significantly for both the town and the employee. And then potentially looking at subsidizing some of that deductible amount. Or actually waiting, right as we speak, waiting for their presentation from the Gateway Group so we can take a look at that. So that is one of the options because when you have a single employee, especially just somebody who's starting out and the cost of the health insurance is at 50/50, then if you get a deductible plan, there's significantly less, you know, cost to that. So that is being looked at right now and that, we discussed that last year.
That'd be great. It'd also be great if we're interpreting the idea of like a employee plus one or something like that to see if there's any, any options there.
Then the other thing, Brian, before I forget, was, you know, looking at the, help me out, the, we contributed into the, what's that plan called?
An HSA type plan?
Yeah, and they say JSA plan too.
Yeah.
Yeah, those can work out. My employer changed to one of those a few years ago. Took a little getting used to, but now I like it. Yeah, I mean, to, go ahead.
What you're, you know, what you're bringing up is certainly not ever, it's not, it's been talked about before. There's, you know, you're, you're right. You know, I, I had this conversation with someone the other day and, you know, they said to me, they're like, wow, selectmen's a lot of, you know, a lot of work and everything. Why didn't you like run for school committee? And I'm like, in my opinion, school committee is way more than I would be able to. That's, you know, children are, are most prized, you know. You know, that, that's too hard for me. I think this is, you know, so I, I appreciate, you know, where you're going with there are other boards. I mean, look at, the school committee's been doing all kinds of things, you know? I mean, they've been getting
And we haven't, and we haven't?
Yeah, but, but nothing is
We talk about the meeting schedule the next month.
Yeah, nothing is ever so passionate as when you begin to discuss your child, you know? So, so anyway, so you're right. I mean, the planning board does, you know, a, a ton of work. So, you know, unfortunately, I don't think there's a perfect plan. I mean, some, actually, a couple of folks had said to me at different times, you know, it, it was actually one person that was on a really busy board. This person said to me, I'd be happy with a free dump sticker. You know, so, so there's a lot to the conversation. I don't know, you know, if we ever come up with an equitable plan for everybody, but.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, from what you've said so far, you know, the rationale on the department head employee situation. I mean, that sounds like that's something that should have been visited when inspectional services took over the Board of Health employees. And maybe that's where we start. You know, perhaps that is something that, you know, in a future election cycle, somebody that's brought on is not qualified for that. We're obviously in the middle of that right now, so if someone has already pulled papers, you wouldn't want to pull the rug out from under them. But it does make me nervous if all of a sudden everybody went and pulled a family plan. Where are we going to find those funds?
No, I, you know, I, I agree with you. But I think too that, you know, the stipend was put in place so that, you know, people wouldn't do that. They would have the incentive not to take the insurance. And, you know, that's, like you said, that's, that's like a gamble, you know? It is, it is a gamble, but I, this is, this is a real tough one. I mean, like I said, if you want to look at something, I'm always open to looking at numbers and but this is certainly not easy, you know? And there could be people at home saying, no one should get anything, and that's true. But I don't see people breaking the door down to do these jobs either, you know, so.
No, they're not. And there's also not a lot of people utilizing the benefit now, which means that if something were to change, we're not affecting a lot of people at the moment.
Right.
Or in the next cycle as people roll in and out. But obviously, this is just
Yeah, that was our thought process last year when we were doing the union negotiation stuff was that, you know, if we made any big changes, there wouldn't be a ton of people affected, so.
Maybe $30,000 more for town planner.
Okay, anybody else? Well said?
No, good for now. I think it's a topic that we should revisit though and see what we should do. Now that we've kind of put it out there, get some feelers, but appreciate the discourse.
We're not going to be able to do anything for this time meeting, so you know.
That's all right.
Okay, just so you know, thanks. Okay, revisit appointing in the interim town administrator per section 2M of the Act, providing for the town administrator in the town of Lakeville.
All right, am I up again?
You're up again.
Up again. The agenda.
All right, so what might have, we might not have caught this back when everything was going on, is that our act actually spells out that if we're going to have a vacancy exceeding 30 days, and, you know, let's put it out there, I think we're at 120 now. We're supposed to instill an interim for the time being and then that interim can't be for more than 180 days in the position. So we've been getting by pretty well. I'm curious to see when we're going to get the next TA in place. My internal thought is we're probably looking at May or June by the time all the interviews are done and candidate selected and negotiations take place. And they, if they already have a position, they might have to then give notice, which could be a number of weeks. So we might still be another three months out by the time it's done. I'm curious to see if MRI has had any updates on that. I would be
Leah's going to give us an update later.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I can give you an update later.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I would certainly be willing to say, let's, let's throw it out there if we want to. And we have budget season coming. We're going to be ridic, I mean, what do we have? 20 something meetings, it looks like, in the next few weeks. It wouldn't be bad perhaps to get somebody in if we can, if there's somebody qualified in the area that, you know, is, is just outside the position, retired for a few years, to just help us out day to day so that we can focus on the budget and everything else that's coming up for town meeting.
Budget's all done.
We had a lot of meetings coming still.
No, but the budget's done.
Draft's done.
It's not like drafting the budget. Todd did all that. It is, it's all done, ready to go. We'll put the budget books together this week.
Todd is loving life.
Ask Tracy. I already got her started on it.
She looks thrilled.
I have to order some stuff to make the budget books. We don't have any stock yet.
Very colorful last year. I hope they are again.
I mean, I just, I do know that we're aiming for that first week of March for the interviews. So hopefully, we won't, I, I'm really hoping we don't have to wait till May or June. But I can give you, we actually just got stuff today. So I can give you more of an update on the town administrator search when we hit old business, if that, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I would just say my preference right now would be to try to get somebody in for the next couple of months and then help that person onboard when they get here, whomever it might be.
The, the problem with that, Brian, is that you waste so much time trying to train that person to do stuff, so.
Well, maybe, I mean, if, if there's retired folks out there that already held a position, it should be minimal.
Yeah, okay.
Leah?
I'm going to say no comment. I, I'm getting tired and I'm not even doing as much work as you and Rich are, but I have a lot of things going on in my personal life too. But I, I, I don't know. I, I guess I just really want to hope that we can have someone in by April 1st. And again, I don't want to see us take a long time to make a decision. I mean, last time around, we took a week and I really don't want to do that. I'd love, I know it's another meeting and I know you have something going on that week too, Brian, but I would really love for us to be able to finish the interviews, plan a, just a meeting with one agenda item to appoint the town administrator like two days later, 48 hours posting. I don't think we should need any more time than that. If someone really, a department head or something has something significant to say to us after they see the interviews, because those interviews will be public. You know, for me, it's just cutting to the chase. And like I said way back at the beginning, I just want to get, I didn't want a big range in the salary because I didn't want to be quibbling over two or three thousand dollars or so. I, I will say, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not even doing as much work as you guys are, but, you know. I'm tired. I'm gonna leave it there.
So you're a no.
I'm sorry. I, I'm, you know, if, if we run into a snag with the search, then I would, I'll be the first one to bring it up. But right now, we have a long meeting booked next week and actually the search committee sent us all kinds of information today, all the essays and the resumes so that we can, you know, work on next week, so. If I, I think I'm gonna stop right there.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is a request from the planning board to review the site claim for four seventy-five Kenneth Wells Drive. This is an existing building and if you look at the plans, you can see there's really no changes except for the, they put a place where the dumpster is gonna go and it's fenced in and so forth and so on, so there's really not major changes to.
I just think the chief to let him know he can come back on if he'd like.
Okay. So if any of the board members have any questions of the of that plan?
The only thing I want to ask, Mr. Chair, is a few weeks ago, we had an issue with a street address on a new development or I've gotten an update on that since and it's gonna take, you know, by the time everyone who's involved to change it changes it. So I guess going forward, can we just make a, a mention to the planning board that if in any one of these site plans that they're giving us, if the potential address is gonna change, that they could let us know that? Or should I do that on my own?
This is an existing address. Okay, already in place. So any, any new one, they, they should assign a new address, which should be done with the planning board and the Board of Assessors.
I think going forward, I'm just gonna ask the question anyways to make sure that the address shouldn't or isn't changing, just so that we don't have too many more things piling up.
Okay, any other questions on the site?
My question was going to be, this is an existing building, why? Why didn't it already have this, I guess, if this is a safety or a response issue?
You mean the dumpster?
No, the gravel road. Are we not looking, are we looking at something different?
I think the only change is the dumpster, if I remember correctly.
I could have sworn I saw something about adding a gravel road.
And that, that the fire chief said.
This, is this in the dumpster park, Kenneth Welch?
Yep.
Four seventy-five, yeah.
Basically, the, the fire code requires that we have access to all sides of the building within a hundred and fifty feet of the apparatus. It was something that was missed in the original construction, so change in ownership or change of use provides me with an opportunity to make, to enforce the code.
Is there enough room? Because it looks like there's a cranberry bog that gets pretty close to the other side. Do they even have enough room to do that for you?
The engineer said that he can put in a twenty-foot wide gravel fire lane that would accommodate my heaviest vehicle.
Okay.
And provide access to two more sides, which makes the building compliant.
Yeah, because you want to get to like two of them right now, right?
Just one of them.
One.
Okay, I assume, Chief, that you already submitted your comments or about.
It did.
Thank you. Any other comments about four seventy-five Kenneth Wells Drive?
No, thank you, Chief, for satisfying my curiosity.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. A discuss and vote to remove, remove, renew animal shelter contract for the town of Carver in Rochester. These are the same contracts that have been approved by the other towns. So I will entertain a motion to have the contracts approved and signed by the chairman.
Go moved.
Second emotion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, I.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm just to note, all three selectmen sign these contracts. That's how they set up.
Okay, that's fine. Then I withdraw, I withdraw the the motion that have the other board members sign it as well. I don't know why, but okay, we'll do that.
I didn't even see that part.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to have the board sign the contracts, the, excuse me, the shelter contracts of the town of Carver and town of Rochester.
I'll move.
Second emotion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
Okay, the camera, I. Next on the agenda is to discuss and vote to accept the resignation from Gail Fisher from the Lakeville Arts Council.
I'll make motion that we accept the resignation of Gail Fish, who says that she has learned so much from being part of this talented group and has enjoyed getting to know everyone, but she has things that she has to refocus her priorities. So I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Gail Fish from the Lakeville Arts Council.
Second emotion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, I.
Quick question, sir. Do we know how much time was left on her appointment that we'll have to then refill? Or maybe Tracy needs?
I don't know. I did speak to the chair of the group and they will be recruiting someone to submit to the Board of Selectmen for the vacancy, because these people are generally made up of people that are involved in the arts.
That's good. Thank you.
Welcome. Discuss requests from the police chief to appoint Paul Hunt as a special police officer. Police chief, I respectfully request the appointment of retired police officer Sergeant Paul E. Hunt, position of special police officer. Paul has worked for the town of Lakeville Police Department for twenty-eight years before retiring and taking administrative position for the Massachusetts College of Pharmacy Police Department, where he serves as the rank of captain. Sergeant Hunt will continue his service to town of Lakeville by assisting with traffic decals. I request this appointment to expire on July twenty, July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, along with other special police officers. Appointments, I will entertain a motion to appoint Paul Hunt as a special police officer to expire on July thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll move.
Second emotion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, I. Next on the agenda is to discuss and vote to approve the performance review form. We have Glenda Dumphy, our HR director here, on here now. And one of the, the goals last year was to improve the performance review form. And she has drafted a new form to review, to be used by the, well, the performance review. Glenda, did you want to say anything about it or you all set?
Um, I, I think it's long overdue. We've been using the same form since September of two thousand and fourteen. We had two different forms. One was for department heads and one was for non-managers and every year I was getting feedback from those that had to write them, that they were just really redundant and they weren't user-friendly. So I looked at a lot of different samples and I kind of pulled what I liked from different forms and kind of put my own spin on it. And then I sent it to department heads and got their feedback and the feedback I got was, was positive, so. Got a lot of different samples and I kind of this form I think will help with people to be able to do it more quickly and efficiently. Some were just handwriting and so I think this is just gonna be a better situation for everybody.
Okay, does the board, I know that the board received it for your comments, does the board have any other proposed changes or recommendations that they want to make?
Um, I I'm not a fan, and you know what? I'm not a human resource person. And I won't even pretend to be, but I'm really not a fan of the term direct report. Is there anything else we can use in that place? Otherwise, if I'm the only, again, if I'm the only one that cares, we can move on, but.
I'm sure I can come up with something. I didn't want to say subordinate. I don't like that either.
I don't like that one either. Okay, we'll leave direct report. That's fine. And like you said, so this is gonna be for managers and non-managers, department heads, it's for everyone. I, I mean, I, I kind of like it because it seems very simple. I think it's easy to understand for for all people, all parties. I think it gives you as the human resource director, a lot of information right on the front page, which I think is good. I also like that it's promotion, you have up there probationary period review, so that's right off the, you don't have to sit there and say, oh, is this there? You know, so when you, when they end up being stacked up in someone's, you know, file, this one, the first one would be on the bottom with probationary checked off and then, you know, so I, I just think, and, and I like the consistency. I'm happy with, sometimes I have issues with, you know, these very general, not general, but exceeds meets improves and unsatisfactory. Kind of reminds me, remember when our kids went to elementary school and they went from A, B, C, D, one, two, three, four? But those were the same. I think it tells a lot, so I appreciate all the work that you put into this.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yep, so I reviewed this. I thought it was very well done. Nice flow through it. I like how the sections are broken up. I also appreciate the fact that, you know, the employee gets an opportunity to kind of comment themselves in a few areas. Clorinda, I apologize that I didn't pick up on this when I sent in my first round of comments. I didn't know if there's any value in adding in each of the areas. So you've got it broken up like quality work, job knowledge, and it says comments. Should we also have employee comments there in case they want to respond to what was said? I know there is also a final one at the bottom there, but I thought it was very well done. I like the consistency that Clea said. The one item that I would consider adding, I already shared this with Clorinda and I know I'm an odd duck in this area, which is I really love kind of the, the full circle of feedback. So I like the ability of a employee to give manager feedback, so the manager knows what they're doing well, what the employee might not like. That's the only thing I would add, but otherwise I, I do really like this form.
I wouldn't mind seeing that in there if it wasn't mandatory, let's say, you know, if an employee didn't want to, then, you know.
It definitely can get awkward, even if you, even if you set up a system where it's anonymous. Clorinda pointed out that sometimes we have to, you know, managers that only have one direct report. So even though it's anonymous, it very quickly becomes easy to figure out.
Okay. Do we want to add that or you want to, Glenda, how do you feel about that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm open to that.
Be optional.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised performance review form and adding the employee comment section. Is that in each section or do you know, we need to put a, Clorinda?
I can add it to each of the different sections, if that's what you had in mind, Brian.
Is that what you want, Brian?
That's what I was thinking. If it's overkill, that's fine. I just thought if there was a, you know, if a manager took the time to call out certain incidents or examples, you know, the, the employee might want an opportunity just to directly respond to those if they felt it was necessary.
Sure.
Okay, so I, somebody want to make that motion or just?
I'll make that motion to approve this performance review form that Clorinda has put together for us.
I'm adding, go ahead.
So with, with the, the edits as discussed?
With the edits as discussed. I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, I. Glenda, I'll text you when we're done.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Clorinda.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Clorinda.
You're welcome.
I didn't even see. Okay. I guess one thing we should have mentioned upfront that the chat function, the chat feature is on. Whatever.
Anything come in yet?
No, I haven't seen anything either. Okay, next on the agenda is discuss the reuse of the old library at two forty-one Main Street. As the board knows, a couple of months ago, the the, something brewing that was leasing the building has notified us that they're going out of business. They're not gonna, they're not gonna lease the building anymore. And they'll be out of the building supposedly by February twenty-eighth. And Leah, I know that you were supposed to call them and notify them that to remove the, when they're gonna remove the, the, the stuff from the building. Have they, have you talked to them?
Um, I, I have not. I was busy doing other things though, so if I could give a little update here. So I know at our meeting, Brian had suggested we reach out to the Economic Development Committee, which I did.
We later realized I was on.
That's fine. You were doing a lot of other things.
Did you ask Brian?
I didn't ask Brian. So I only received one response, so that's concerning to me because I didn't even receive a response from, you know, a couple of the people. Not even to say, because I, you know, I, I asked a question, you know, is everyone, would everyone be available to start meeting more regularly? The selectmen are trying to, you know, so I only received one answer, so you know, I, I think maybe, I don't know if Tracy, you usually reach out if folks don't respond at all to see if they want to stay on the committee. I'm not sure how we do that. I could certainly do that. But I did receive a response from Lori Driscoll, who's on seed. Is that what we call that? Yeah. And, and what does that mean exactly? I know I should know, but southeastern.
I think it's southeastern economic development.
Okay. So she, she did have an opinion. She said she would like to see another business go in there. I explained to her that we have a lot going on. She suggested if at all possible, we don't charge a full price for, you know, the rent if we do decide to, you know, lease it again, but also in the meantime, I've done some talking to the the historical folks, Nancy LaFave specifically, and Jerry Taylor and Brian Reynolds, actually. And they're trying to, and, and some of you may know this, some of you may not, but they're trying to get the historic library into the historic register. So I I, not only that, but almost that whole section right there, that whole corner of things. So I don't know if it would be more helpful if we just don't rush if we decide to rent it, to let them do their work and anyways, there's a much bigger project going on here than just whether we should rent it or not, between, I think, the Sampson Cemetery, the, I don't know if the, the Historic Town Hall, but the Historic Library, part of the Sampson Cemetery, and then the other where we do the Veterans Day, I forget what that's called.
The Frind Iron Square.
Yes, that one is what they're trying to get into the historic register. So I almost want to wait and let them have the opportunity, opportunity to do that before going into, let's say, a two or a three. and let them have the opportunity, opportunity to do that before going into, let's say, a two or a three year contract with someone. Um, if we move ourselves in there and, you know, we can always throw ourselves out without, you know, um, I'm making light of that, but uh, so anyways, so I heard from one person from the Economic Development Committee. I don't know if the other two people still want to participate on the econo, on the Lakeville Economic Development Committee. Um, but also the historic folks are trying to get that whole area right there and into the historic register. So I think there's a lot more going on right now. Um, we can control more what goes on if we put our own building department there, so to speak.
Okay, the, the first thing as far as the historical thing is concerned, that's at least two years out before that would even be done. You know, it takes a long time for that whole process to happen.
Explain the whole thing to me.
Number two is uh, we cannot give a reduced rate. The next time, if we decide that we are going to go out, this has to go out the bin. So it's not some, somebody coming forward and saying, ah, we're gonna, you know, give it to you for this price. Everybody has to be treated the same.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, you know, I understand, you know, the, the economic development point of view. But it is a historic building. We do need space. Um, plus the building's costing us a lot of money. We got to put, you know, we did $7,000 worth of work. You know, last, I think, wasn't it to the electrical system there, so, you know.
And I think one of the things that bothered me about the last agreement was that that money was supposed to go towards helping that building become a registered historical building. And we weren't even barely covering costs. I mean, then we spent $7,000 on fixing the electrical system since the new tenant had moved in and put more equipment in, and there's seven out of 12 months gone right away, so I would not be, if we did go to an external party, would not be in favor of reduced rate either, um, market rate. We, we, if anything, to help get them towards that historical status. Um, but I can't help but look at this and the next item on the agenda and feel like they are um, very much two pieces of the same puzzle when put together.
I agree.
Oh, so the situation really is when you look at it, okay? Um, and, you know, we're talking about, we need our own space, which Brian just points out when we went to number 14 of the agenda, you know, as well, is that, you know, even if you were going to charge, you know, a going rate, you know, for that, you have all the maintenance, you know, associated with it, and um, um, we could utilize, I believe it's 14 hundred square feet off the top of my head uh, of what it is. And if you look at it, then what, what are you going to put in there? You know, what would be allowed? First of all, a restaurant can't be allowed because you'd have to upgrade the, the septic system, you know, uh, you'd have to put in um, you know, systems to take out the, the, what do you call those systems? Smoke and stuff like that. And uh, the Historical Commission is not going to allow us to make serious modifications, you know, to that building, you know, inside to something like that. So, you know, I know that there's some people that have said, oh, I want to make it a real, I'll, I'll go in there as a Realtor or some other type of businesses, but if you look at it from that perspective, we're, we're saying, we should be saying to ourselves, that's cheap space for us in the short term. And I think that that's one of the things we have to look at, because when we talk about the next item, um, you know, which earliest could be two or three years out, uh, before we begin that process. So I think that that's the decision that really has to be made. Now, at the same time, as Brian pointed out, that, you know, the monies associated with that uh, lease should have been used for the improvements of the building, and it wasn't done. Uh, we don't know why. We certainly, we weren't on the board, you know, at the time. But, you know, there's two major improvements that need to be done to that building. Number one is a handicap ramp, here's that accessibility, no matter whether we use it or we rent it out to somebody else, that has to be done. And then the other thing is the handicap bathroom. You need a handicap bathroom in that building, which does not exist today. And for those of us that, that know that building pretty well, um, the bathroom is a problem. So that would have to be done.
Yeah.
You know, no matter what. So when you look at the monies that the town is going to have to invest, you know, in that building in the short term, we better utilize if we use it ourselves, and that's just my opinion.
Do we know, I'm sorry, Leah, I was just going to ask, do we know from talking uh, to the historical folks, if we move forward with those two major upgrades that the building needs, does that cause a problem for them about the historical part?
No.
No, it does not.
Okay.
Not those, not those um, specific items. Nate, I think you're with us, aren't you?
There he is.
He's hiding, but he's there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just going stealth.
Um, I'll let you answer. I don't think so. I think Nancy LaFave told me that you can put on anything that makes it ADA um, compatible, um, will not take away from the historic from the historic part of it, but you, maybe you know better than I do, Nate.
No, gen- generally, you're, you're exactly right, Leah. Um, you know, when we took a look at historic buildings, we want to make them accessible for folks to go enjoy them and, and, and see them. So, so typically ADA um, or accessibility based um, improvements, uh, don't take anything away from the historic nature of the building.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to do something that then prevents them from doing something after all that work.
Yeah, and, and there, I, I mean, there, I know Nate's worked with Nancy LaFave and all the, all the folks. Um, and they're, they're, they're really very detail oriented. Um, I know, I think it was Jerry Taylor that said something to me about, you know, there's shelving that's all in there that the um, book cafe had all the books on, and they, you know, they were like, whoa, we don't want to take the shelving out if, if it's going to take away from, you know, um, so they, they definitely, you know, cross all their Ts and dot all their Is, but um, uh, Nancy did answer that question that it doesn't take away, the, the handicapped ramp, the accessible ramp wouldn't take away from um, that, but.
And there is, there is some other improvements that, you know, will have to be done. You know, they, they, I believe Nate, help me if I'm, make sure I'm right. They want to save the existing windows that they are, except for the ones in the back, which are, if you guys have been over there looking at them, they're pretty bad, bad, real bad shape, but the other ones, they, they, they want to keep those wooden windows and try to fix them up or whatever, so that's, that's other thing. The other thing is that there may be uh, some masonry work uh, uh, that needs to be done, you know, to uh, fill in some of the cracks and stuff like that, so there is those type of things. But the other, the other thing to, um, you know, to use the building or whatever uh, for ourselves, it would be just a matter of uh, cleaning it up and painting and probably redoing those floors, which would not be significant. Just refinishing those floors. I'm not saying redoing those floors. Is that correct, Nate?
Yeah, you're, you're right, Rich. Um, you know, so over the years, there's been small petitions and, and whatnot built on that. Uh, the first floor, the main, the main floor, if those were decommissioned, uh, you know, do some, some paint, uh, there's a lot of rotten window sills. Uh, we'd want to go over there and get those squared away, and then, you know, the big one, in which you alluded to this, is the masonry repairs. So once you get a crack and you get moisture in there, what happens is during the winter, it freezes and it, and it separates further, so it goes, it's compromised more and more every year. Um, you know, if, if we could go in there and, and, and make sure that we use the appropriate materials, uh, patch the masonry, um, you know, per his historic specifications, patch the windows, got some new paint on there, um, did the handicap ramp, the handicap bathroom, and then took out those uh, petitions on the inside of the building and, and get those back to, to where they're, where they used to be. Um, redo the floors, and then you'd have kind of a blank palette uh, to decide what the purpose of the building was going to be from there.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any other comments?
Well, the only other um, comment from being a business owner is um, so technically, the downstairs space was not supposed to be used. It wasn't considered part of the lease, I don't think. But it was used for storage. Part of it was, so we don't really, you know, the records that are down there should really just stay down there themselves. We shouldn't really have any other storage down there. So if you take away that space, and then if we take away, I, I mean, Nate, how much space do you need to put in a, you know, an accessible bathroom? If you take away even more square footage for that, then there's less square footage of what we can charge anyways for a rent, so um, I, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I would rather have us be the tenant there, or be the, the, the user there, because we can inconvenience ourselves anytime to make these repairs that Nate was talking about and that you were talking about, Rich, for over the two years, so we can get to that historic, um, hopefully that historic designation, whereas if we had a tenant in there, you know, would be asking them all the time to inconvenience them to work on the building, and I'm not so sure that would be the right thing to do to a tenant who's trying to run a business. So um, I, I think we would be the better, the better folks to be in there right now. And Nate could oversee the work without even having to leave his desk.
So, Richard, Rich, if I may add to that a little bit too, is that, you know, we do have to condition the place, so if, if we don't continue to heat it and don't continue uh, to condition it in the, in the winter months and let the humidity rise, we're going to create a situation where there's, there's more damage and there's more repairs. So, you know, in the short term, uh, possibly could get, uh, you know, somebody over there and, and at least occupying the space and, you know, right now, I mean, we're in the middle of a, a, a health pandemic. Um, but, you know, we're, we're all doing stuff remotely anyway. The, the town office isn't, isn't open. Um, you know, maybe it's an opportunity to get somebody over there sooner than later to at least um, you know, continue to monitor the building, building work out of there. I do have uh, all building department and planning board records in the basement right now, so you know, if the dehumidifier stopped working, or if there was a leak, um, you know, Teddy's checking on it, um, you know, a couple of times a week, but really, it would be better if somebody was in there sooner than later.
Okay.
I would, I would say if I can, I think the last time we spoke on this, you know, I was kind of really on the fence about getting a tenant, should the town use it? Um, since that time, had an opportunity to look at, you know, what we're up against in the town office building and how we're kind of crammed in there. And I don't know if you guys remember, ever see those puzzles where it's like a bunch of plastic pieces and there's like one missing piece? You have to slide them all around to make everything fit. That's kind of what we are right now. And I kind of feel like, and, and I kind of feel like this building now being empty is that, that missing piece we need to be able to move everything around. Um, so right now, I'm, I'm much more leaning towards it makes sense to have us as a tenant in there. Whether it's long-term or not, who knows, but at least to be able to then do some of the other things that are probably necessary in, you know, the next agenda item. So I, I think that's where I'm, that's where I'm falling right now.
Well, plus, I mean, we wouldn't be able to have a tenant in there until the bathroom and the ramp are finished, and I, you know, there's so much going on right now that I can't see us getting that done in two weeks.
We don't have money to do that yet. So, uh, just so the board knows, and I uh, um, we have uh, based upon numbers by Nate, put some money in the capital money, capital improvement plan to do the um, the ramp and to do the handicap bathroom.
Okay.
So that would be funded at the May 10th.
Yeah, we can't do that anyways till then, so.
Well, we could get all the planning done, ready to go.
So should we vote on this? Do you want to vote on it?
I would say we do.
Okay, uh, Brian, do you want to take a stab at making a motion?
Uh, sure, let me know how this sounds. Uh, I'll uh, I'll make a motion that for the, for foreseeable future, Town of Lakeville will not entertain uh, an external tenant occupying the historic library, and we will intend to uh, occupy that space ourselves.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
EB and I.
They are.
The camera eye. Okay.
I feel like that was a big decision.
Well, I think it's the right decision in the short term.
Yeah, well, a lot, a lot's happened in the last few weeks. Talked to a lot of people and you know, I just, I know this isn't on the agenda right this moment in time, but we have some really great people. Professionals, of course, working in town, but some people, some really great people on committees. Um, we got, we got good stuff going on here in Lakeville. Onward, next.
Okay, now to discuss the uh, the options to update the town offices, the fire station, and discuss updating the 2007 feasibility study. So so I think the discussion is about, as Brian may have pointed out, a short term, maybe a medium term, and then a long term solution. Since we just made a decision to um, take over the um, old library. There's a couple of things that we can do in the short term, which I think are pretty important. First of all, is that uh, we consider moving all of inspectional services from the town office building, which includes the building department and the water health and the conservation agent and um, I think that's about it, Nate, if I'm mistaken. If we move them all into that building on the first floor. Now, what that does is it frees up some space, especially in the board health area, that uh, would help the fire department to at least have some space where they can um, do some things, whether it's a combination of some offices or a combination of what they call their day room, or, or um, some areas for bunking, or whatever it happens to be. Uh, that would relieve some of the problem in the fire department in short term. Now, that doesn't solve the problem, okay? That is only a short term problem. Short term solution is to free up that space. The other thing that I think is important, as you know, when the renovations were done to squeeze everybody into the current town office space, we lost conference room space, okay? So if you take some, if you take like um, the office that Nate Darling's in, okay, and you make that a conference room, that conference room immediately becomes immediate, uh, handicap accessible, number one. Number two is that all the small committees can meet in that room, which it used to happen at the town hall, instead of having to use the police station or the library or the COA, which would free up a lot of opportunity for meeting space. So that's option number one, you know, to, to consider. Um, and maybe we could have that conversation first as an idea. Nobody wants to speak up on that?
I'm waiting to hear what Nate says, because he's the one that is facing a potential move. And now we're going to move him across the street and up, up across, up and across the street, but then we're going to tell him he's going to stay there and monitor all the construction or anything we're going to do. So um, I, I'd really like to get um, Nate Darling, Building Commissioner and Director of Inspection Services opinion.
But uh, if I, if I can add something, Nate, before you respond to Leah, um, the answer might be zero, but how often do residents come in and need to visit, say treasurer, or the clerk, and somebody under one of your departments? Is it pretty much they're just coming in to see one of your folks and that's it, or the others and that's it? Would, would breaking you guys out cause any foot traffic issues with residents?
Um, probably not, Brian. Um, there, there are several occasions, especially um, in years past where uh, every building permit required a, a tax collector sign off, and, and that would be one thing that would be problematic. Uh, now we switched over to uh, an online permit platform that, that you've seen, uh, viewpoint, uh, put out by OpenGov. Um, and, and we're, we're establishing a somewhat dissimilar uh, process where uh, the tax collector gives me um, a list of, of folks that um, are delinquent in their taxes, and I work right off of that list to withhold uh, permits when necessary. So I guess the, the short answer, uh, which is too late for, uh, the short answer to your question would, would be no. I, I don't really think there'll be anything problematic with that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Would you agree it was more problematic when the assessors were down and across the street? Because the assessor- Because the assessors and the tax collector's office sort of need to be next to each other?
Yeah, 100% Leah, tho- those are, uh, well, you know, you, you were both of the assessors for a number of years. So, so yeah, they work closely. It's important that they are, uh, approximate to one another. And, you know, the, the, the whole thing with the, you know, town hall reconfiguration and to Rich's point. Um, we did really fit a whole bunch in a small area. And the whole reason we did that i- is to create the accessibility, right? Uh, a lot of times we saw folks trying to, you know, fumble up the stairs to see where the old town clerk and, and, uh, tax collector were. Um, I think that, you know, given the space that we had, we did a pretty good job, uh, getting everybody in there. But the, we did lose, um, the meeting space, which was, which was a real problem.
Well, and I just don't want, you know, anyone asking the question, well, if we needed space, why did the. You know, selectmen at the time decide and the assessors and, you know, I was an assessor at the time. Um, why did we sell the house if we needed the space? Well, I, I think that wasn't, that didn't have a ramp either. But also having the assessors where it is next to the tax collector's office is certainly much more. Um, efficient. Sometimes people would drive back and forth between the two and that was, you know, and I, 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 I received plenty of complaints on that. So, um.
That, that house did have a handicap ramp.
Oh, it did. That's right. It had it on the side. But, but you know, people still had to go back and forth. So I think it was still a good move to move the assessors back to town hall. I think there's less between the office, like, uh, Brian was asking between, um. The building department and the clerk treasurer and tax collector and assessors, so.
Yeah, you're absolutely right Leah, and, and really with the, the assessors building, um, that we sold. Uh, there, there was a ramp there, but you got to remember there was three floors, right? There, there was the accessible floor and then two additional floors. So, uh, 1,500 square feet or so per floor. We had close to 3,000 square feet of, of unusable space, uh, that wasn't accessible. Uh, so it, it certainly was the, the right move, uh, to bring the assessors over next to the, the tax collector. The other thing that, that's important to note, um, and, and Rich and I have discussed this on numerous occasions is, is procurement and prevailing rate. Um, the assessors building wasn't historic, uh, in nature, uh, but it did need a new roof. It needed siding, it needed windows, needed a heating system. Um, there were a lot of things going on over there that would have grown exponentially and just been. You know, in, in my, my opinion, fiscally irresponsible, uh, to do that work for, for one office. E- especially where you couldn't grow into the second and third floor. Um, the, the historic library is, is by far in a way dissimilar to that. Whereas we do have a building that, uh, is of historic significance. Um, in, you know, in order to, to really take care of that building like it should be. Um, we get, we got to put a fair amount of money into it and, and I think it would be a great place to have an inspectional services. Even if it's just for the short term, uh, something that would justify the maintenance of the building and, and the upkeep. Get it back into its, uh, earlier grandeur, if you will. And it, and it kind of makes sense for the town.
Thank you.
So, did you want to say something, Brian?
I was just going to say, uh, Nate knows I'm a huge fan of trying to get all of our paper. Digitized and if we get him closer to his archives and that helps that, then I'll lock him in the basement till he's done.
Um, chief, in talking about this first proposal. The space that we're talking about, the border health space, and then of course the offices. You know, up the whole area upstairs would be available for the fire department, you know, as well. Um, what would you do in the short term to, uh, address some of your concerns?
Well, the, the short term, I would be able to, uh, the current deputy's office, I could turn that into a, um. Into a, a bunk area. Uh, currently we have people, sometimes two people sleeping in our day room. And, and this climate of COVID-19, we know that's not a great idea. So they're literally sleeping in their dining room and their, in their TV watching room. Uh, so I created a, a day, uh, excuse me, a bunk room in the current deputy's office. I would, uh, put my, my administrative assistant probably down in the, the, uh. The health area is almost like a, a greeter and also admin section down there. And I would probably expand into that room as well to create a separate day room. Get away from, uh, get my, uh, the, uh, the dining area and stuff away from the protective equipment. Protective equipment is easily contaminated. They, they, they really shouldn't be eating anywhere near it. Basically, it would, it would be able to, I'd be able to, to separate people and, and distance them a little bit. I'd be able to, to have them relax and, and be able to eat their food away from, uh, areas that are. Are basically for storage of potentially contaminated equipment. I would probably put, um, my deputy into the, uh, the, uh, conservation office. And, uh, he, you know, deputy would have some privacy because, you know. We do deal with a lot of medical issues, things that are confidential and, and being able to close your door once in a while is a, is a very good thing. But, you know, that's the, that's the short, you know, short-term little improvements to, uh, to maybe. Further address, uh, a bigger issue down the road.
Okay, thank you. Anybody, anyone, any comments on that or we all say with that? Okay, Brian, did?
Just gonna say I think it's a, a good first step, but I probably need to take another walk through the, uh, the upstairs right now, chief, by your office, just to see how that's laid out. To get a, a better picture of it. Um, it sounds like you guys would retain that space for the time being.
Well, the area outside my office, um, I mean, we, we really, it almost would be another meeting area. It's not handicap accessible, but it would be like a, a training, a training area for us to. You know, to, to have CPR classes and, and things of that nature.
Is there? I was just going to ask a quick question. Is there, there might not be enough space, but is there enough time to, uh, enough space to get the, um. You know, the, the makeshift female bunk room downstairs? I just worry about someone waking up and running down the stairs at a moment's notice.
Well. I mean, we could, we could actually, we could look at the space, um. If, if we, the, that office area has enough room to, to kind of separate, uh, separate the firefighters. Uh, we could put in, uh, partitions and things of that nature to provide privacy. Um, and we could still maintain that, that, uh, that third separate bunk room towards the rear of the building.
Okay.
Um, my, my, Brian, this might be a question for you. It also could be a question for Nate, because Nate's been, you know, um. With all the technology stuff, building at the police station, whatever, but we have that technology room that's up there. I, is that, I thought at one point we weren't going to need that whole room. Is that true, not true? Is that?
I, I kind of cry every time I walk by that room. Um, that is not what you would normally set up environmentally for that kind of equipment.
No, and I mean, it was, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong Nate, you may know that it was built out of necessity more than anything, not out of planning, I think.
Correct me if I'm wrong Brian, but I, all the services have been moved over to the police station. There's still a few more left in that room to be done, but. I think we need, I think we need that space for, uh, switches and routers, I believe.
Yeah, there's, they're like.
Telephone system.
Yeah, the new phone stuff's in there. Um, the, the problem is, you know, problem, if you want to call it that. All, all the lines terminate into that room for the building. So even if you get rid of the switches and things, you've still got all of your patch panels in there. Um, it's just.
We're not, we're not going to be picking up that whole square footage in there, a- anytime. Any, okay.
Yeah, you, you kind of have to leave some stuff there for redundancy purposes. So if, like if the line between police and town hall ever gets snapped, um, town hall doesn't also go offline. So there's, there are some thoughts there about that. But, uh, you might pick up a little of it, but I, I don't think we could get all of it.
Okay, so that, so we shouldn't even consider that as usable space right now, the way things stand.
It's, 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 it's not a big space, Leah, anyways.
But i- it's still the whole, almost like that whole corner of that upstairs area outside of the chief's office, so.
Okay, so that's, um, that's, uh, I guess we can call that phase number one, I guess. We want to talk about that, that way. Um, which, you know. I, 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 and I know the chief's not happy about the whole situation, but at least it helps them. Soon to, to create some space, you know, and. Whatever. Okay, so, so then on the big question was that back in 2007. Um, the town did a feasibility study and it was called, uh. Public Safety and Town Office Feasibility Study?
Feasibility Study, here it is.
And, uh, it looks like Leah's got her pile and I'm sure knowing Brian, he's got it up on his computer there and.
And Brian's, Brian's probably already read it from cover to cover.
He has.
Um, skip the police station parts.
Yeah, that, that's good.
Anyways, without spending a lot of time talking about that study. Um, things have changed dramatically, you know, in the last 13 years. You know, as far as the buildings are concerned. Um, the town decided to build a new police station and we have a wonderful new police station. And of course, the chief, fire chief is jealous. Right, rightly so.
Does Matt let you sit in his chair every so often at least?
No, well, no. Uh, without a restraining order, I don't, I don't want to talk about it right now.
So, as you know, uh, the decision was made by the prior board to. Um, I think it was Brian's turn, uh, squeeze everybody into a smaller area. You know, square footage wise to try to address some areas having to do with the handicap accessibility. But at the same time, um, they created other problems, you know, especially meeting space.
I was part of that decision, so.
You made that decision, we can blame you. Um, so anyways, so, um. What I think we consider, we should consider doing is, um. Updating or redoing, you know, that feasibility study, uh, which, you know, uh, needs a lot of changes, quite frankly. So, um, some of the alternatives that this study would, would look at. Would be to, um, you know. Renovate the existing fire station the way it is. And build an outbuilding, uh, that could be used for, uh, beside the fire station. And, um. For equipment and stuff and renovation of the existing, you know, fire station. Um, build a new fire station. Uh, onsite, uh, which would be actually was originally proposed was over at the Ted Williams camp beside the COA. Um. And, um, oh, well, I'm sorry, the alternative would be to build it on, build, do it onsite where we are, which would be very difficult. Uh, to do, uh, build a new one, uh, over at the, um. The, uh, seal beside the COA. Or consider, uh, construction a new town hall. Over at the COA. And then, uh, taking the existing building, the whole building, the old, the town hall and the fire station. And, uh, doing some demo work and reconstructing that, that whole building to be used as a fire station. So those are the alternatives that should be considered and in order to be considered. You know, we need to know what we can do with the existing building. But the existing building stays as a town hall, combination fire station. Or, uh, just becomes a fire station and build a new town hall or whatever. So, um, that would be the goal of, uh, putting the feasibility study, you know, together. Um, don't only looking at what the options are, but projecting what the cost may be for all these alternatives.
So because I've never done a municipal or participated in one feasibility study. Can, how, uh, do the, the group comes up with the questions they want answered? Like for me, one of the most important things is. Where does the fire chief think it should be for safety, you know? So of course, the fire chief would, I'm assuming beyond that committee, whatever, but, um. Are questions taken from everybody? Are they? Just from, I've never done one of these, so.
Now, with our consulting firm, whoever that may be. To do exactly what you said, to do an analysis of what the requirements are for each of the locate, each of the buildings and each of the locations. And interview, you know, the chief and town administrator or whatever, along with the board of selectmen and, uh, to decide what the requirements may be. And then they would look at those proposals. Come up with those options and come up with a potential cost of what those options may be.
Okay.
I'm on board for redoing this thing. Um, it's, it's a very thorough report. I mean, for the folks at home, if you want to copy, it's 135 pages. A lot of good information in there. Um, I think it would definitely, it's 13 years old, 14 years old, almost. To get a birthday cake, um, definitely worth redoing since so much has changed in town since then. Um, I know the chief has a, a lot of great ideas on how he could operate better, given the opportunity. Uh, to have some changes. Uh, I think one of the things that's worth saying to folks at home. Which I also didn't think of at first, um, but with speaking with, uh. Director of Inspection Services is that when we start to touch the existing building. Um, code starts to come into play, so it's not just as easy as slapping on another room or two to the end of this thing and keep extending and extending it. Because now you have to go back through the whole building and do some things. So, um, we need to look at not throwing bad money at a problem just to get something else. So I would love to see this updated to get us an idea of what the, the current options are. Um, certainly some of the ones in there we can't do anymore since things have changed, but, um, there's some other good ones. Um, in fact, I, I was very interested to see, they also had the idea of the substation over by, uh, the high school campus. I thought that was, what's, what's your, uh, your thoughts on that chief? Is that something that you would still entertain if the possibility was there or is?
There's a, there's some literature out there that when you do, you divide firefighters, they become less productive. So three firefighters working in, 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 as a unit. Um, are much more productive than five, three firefighters showing up separately. They're able to produce better work. Um, I understand what they're trying to accomplish, uh, there's insurance rates to be, you know, insurance money to be saved, uh, policy money. Uh, things like that by shortening response time. Um, but we're not quite there developmentally, like I don't have enough firefighters to separate them into different stations. I could have a, an empty station, have it for qualified fighters down there. Um, but that doesn't really truly help my response time and in reality. The only benefit from that would be just insurance rates, policy rates. So I, I kind of, I like having my firefighters be able to communicate together, go all in, in force. And they're, they're much more effective. They, you get much more bang for your buck when, when you have three firefighters operating together.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, any other discussion on this?
Do we have any idea, general ballpark, how much a feasibility study like this will cost?
Uh, we're estimating between 50 and $70,000.
Woo.
It is in cheek. You got all engineering and everything to do, cost analysis and stuff like that.
I've, I've been through a, a similar exercise, uh, to assess the, the need for substations. And, and basically what I was used for was, uh, was keeping the, the study mission focused. So like any kind of unique, um, unique facets of the, the jurisdiction, that was what our source was. So I told them what we needed to accomplish and they basically, they, they. They looked to the facility to speak to that. So every fire station, it doesn't really matter what it looks like or, or how big it is. It's supposed to complement the mission, make thing, make my job easier. And that's why you build a fire station. That's not, you know. In my mentality or my philosophy is always to keep things simple as they possibly can. And, and to create efficiency, like I don't, I don't want a palace, I don't want all these things. So when, when the previous, um, uh, person spoke to us. He asked questions about what we did and how we did it, not specifically about the building, like that was on him, that was his job. And it was, it was a, they came out with a, with a good product. It was, it was something that town didn't use, but it was a good, it was a good, uh, good process.
Um, I think right now, just, uh. In case anyone is watching or will be watching tomorrow, or I really do like that people watch our meetings. Um, could you just explain, chief, uh, what's going on right now with? Um, the size of the engine door openings we have versus the size of the. Equipment that's out there. Aren't our doors, I think, a little smaller than what?
The, the dimensions of our, of our fire apparatus base were great. Um, you know, probably in the early 1970s when we had the old Maxim fire trucks. Uh, Doug, you know, Doug Mills was in charge, the, the, the trucks fit in the buildings quite nicely. The, the trucks are, are supposed to do a lot more work. And because we do a lot more work and we have a, a pretty, um, diverse mission, they've gotten bigger to hold more equipment. And so right now, there, there's actually only one or two manufacturers on the market that we can actually buy because. Everybody else can't fit in our. everybody else can't fit in our building. And, and if you're gonna buy a fire truck, you have to make sure it fits in your building. So you guys have seen the damage reports. You've seen the, uh, our young firefighters who've, uh, sideswiped the buildings and damaged fire trucks in the building, trying to get out of there. And it's difficult to be mad with them when, when they're dealing with, with only a, a half an inch of, of, of space to get out of the building on each side of the apparatus.
And he's not exaggerating. Go, go down there and ask them to pull one out and watch the sides. It's, it's that narrow.
Yeah. And in our case, you have to back them back in with, you know, a lot of fire stations now you, you can do the pull through. So, you know.
I, uh, I was on a call. I drove one of the apparatus because we got busy and, uh, it took me two tries to put it away. It was, it's embarrassing.
Well, we won't tell anyone other than the entire Lake Cam Nation.
Okay, uh, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, update the feasibility study of two thousand and seven.
I'm so moved.
Second with discussion, I guess?
No more discussion.
No more discussion. Where, where would something like this be funded out of?
Capital.
Right out of capital?
It's on the capital. I put it on the capital plan.
Oh, all right. Good. Okay. That was seconded. It's getting to that time of night.
Anybody, anybody else?
No, I think any other questions that I would come up now would be much more specific to the actual, how the study happens. So there's not, it's, we can talk about that later.
Okay. All those in favor?
Baby and I.
AI.
Uh, the camera, I. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, to review and vote to approve the board of selectmen's meetings of July twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Make sure I get this right, Tracy. Uh, December twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one and January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll say.
Thank you.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve all those minutes. You want me to reread the minute, the dates?
I'll just put them in.
Okay. July twentieth, twenty twenty, December twenty eighth, twenty twenty, January fourth, twenty twenty-one, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And, um, I know there is one here from July before you, anyone seconds, but uh, that was the appointment meeting with all the town appointments that we do a hundred and fifty or sixty, whatever people. So I don't want anyone to say, why did that take so long?
Okay. Did you second that, Brian?
I was just waiting for it to be done. Second the motion?
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I.
AI.
The camera, I.
And, um, just to let the board know, um, now, um, we're gonna go back. Bonnie and I will work on the list and, um, using the town clerk posting notices to make sure that there aren't some meetings that I wasn't in attendance on, um, that did haven't got missed. So now we'll, um, go through that and make sure we have every single meeting captured. And if not, then I'll go back and, um, do them up from Lake Cam.
Okay. Um, we approved that, right? And we're all set. Uh, any new business?
Um, not new business, but old business, although I think I pretty much did give an update on the library.
Okay. Uh, old business. Um, will you want to give us an update on the, uh, search committee for the town administrator?
Yes. So as of this evening, I believe, Clarinda, so I am the chair, but Clarinda is the point person with the search committee. So all the communication gets done between Clarinda and um, the search committee. So we just tonight, the search, those of us on the search committee received the essays and resumes, I believe. I haven't counted them yet to see how many, but we have a three hour virtual working meeting next week, uh, on the sixteenth. The semifinalist interviews will be the week after on the twenty-fourth. So we will decide next week how many candidates of the ones that we have, we want to bring forward and then we'll do the semifinalist interviews. And I believe March first will be the, um, the interviews for the finalists. So I believe as a board of selectmen, we decided to recommend to the search committee four at a minimum. So we'll see how we get to that number. Four, I think.
Or if one dropped out, they could bring another, I think.
Yeah. Yep. So, um, so we do have a lot of work to do next week and, you know, between now and then, you know, read all the essays and um, go through the resumes. Um, but like I had said earlier, when we sort of talked about it briefly, um, I, I know Brian has a busy week, I think that week. Isn't that your busy week?
One day of that week. I just don't know when it is yet. Um, I'm trying to get clarification, um, from my manager. It might, might be another week or so before we know.
Okay. So our hope is that we can do the, um, finalist interviews, which is the board of selectmen do, and those are public. So, um, there is some talk about doing those in person, but airing it live. But there's, you know, there's things that have to be decided next week and recommendations made to the board of selectmen from the search committee. So I'll know more after our really long three hours. It's a three planned three hour meeting. But like I said, I, you know, I, I certainly want to give any department head or even any employee or anyone from town um, the opportunity to send me an email through the system, through my email address, give me a call, whatever. You know, I'm not going to speak for the other two selectmen, but if someone has something they really wanna, you know, I'd like to give people at least a couple of days to do that, but I really don't want us to wait too, too long to actually, because there is other searches going on right now too. So if we get a good candidate, we don't want to lose them to, you know, if, if they say, oh, well, Lakeville's gonna take a week to make a decision. I'm just gonna, you know, I'm not gonna wait a week. I'll take a job somewhere else. So, that didn't happen to us last time after the interviews, but it did happen between, um, when we picked the finalists and we actually had interviews. We had two candidates drop out. So, so anyways, so a lot of work to do next week and I do know that everyone's on board, everyone's ready. But I, I'll have more to report. Our next meeting is what? Two weeks from tonight, right? So that'll be the night before the, wait, what's today?
February twenty-second.
Yep. Because then the, um, semifinalist interviews are the twenty-fourth. So I'll be able to give, um, my fellow selectmen an update on the twenty-second, what we're looking at for the twenty-fourth, for those, um, uh, executive session, because the candidates still have confidentiality at that point. And then, um, we'll have all the details for the in-person or not. Like MRI suggests we do them in person, but you know, that's a decision that the board of selectmen has to make because we're the ones that have said that we don't want any in-person meetings. So we need to ask ourselves if this, you know, ranks hiring the, you know, the highest administrator in the town ranks above, you know, and, and, and I've been talking to the board of health agent about it and he's okay with it. We've reserved the date with Lake, Lake Cam. So, um, Clarinda and I have separated duties and we're getting it done. But any questions?
Brian, you did say you're available on March first though, right?
You're muted.
Well, no. Uh, the first should be fine. I believe it's March second, third or fourth, where I might have one day that I'm kind of, um, off the grid.
That's good.
So what I'm hoping is if you're, if you're good March first, that we can do the interviews that day. Let's say you know that your meeting is gonna be whatever, maybe we can work. And you know what? Have it the only thing on the agenda just to appoint a town administrator. So we can be in and out in literally twenty minutes. Because of course the person will, would be appointed pending successful contract negotiations. So.
When was the, the finalist interviews potentially?
March first.
So, so interviews then and then appointment when?
Um, I'm saying two days, but you know, that's up to you guys too. If you want, you know, if you want a week to talk to people, then maybe we can compromise, but I, I, you know, I think at that point.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend you waiting a week.
Yeah, that's why. So, so the first is a Monday. Or, so let's say your, your work thing is on Thursday. Maybe we can do it on Wednesday, meet for literally like twenty minutes on Wednesday morning and just do the appointment. Um, if your meeting is on the third, then we can, you, you see what I'm saying? We'll just really work around your schedule, but I'd really like.
No, I want to get this done too. Do, do we have to invite all the finalists to that appointment meeting? What, what?
No.
Okay.
Nope. No.
If they want, they can watch, but.
Yeah, they can watch. My sense is if they were local to us, um, then you know, some of them might come or not, but, um, that's the other thing. So I don't know who is on the semi, the, the list, well, the list that they've brought forward. Um, but I do know that we've gotten folks from out of state. So, and there's still COVID going on. So I don't want to force anyone to be here for an in-person meeting either um, for the final meeting. So.
Quarantine rolls too, depending on what state.
Right. If they're, so, so that's why I'm saying that we can't make all these decisions until we know, you know, who some of these people are, where they're coming from and what their own, you know, feeling it for in person or, you know. So anyways, so.
Okay. So the way I would set it up would be that March first, we do the final interviews and potentially on that agenda, if all of a sudden we all say, uh, we're ready to vote and we can vote that night. If not, if the board feels like they want a couple of days to, you know, look at them, look at the resumes and do whatever they want to do, then we'll move it to a Wednesday or whatever. But we should have those meetings, uh, be prepared. So I assume that you would know your meeting is going to be on Wednesday, probably a few days before that Thursday or Friday or something like that, Brian?
Yes, that should be fine. Um, question for Leah, I think on the, the committee. When do, and of course, we might not know yet, but when would you anticipate the finalists being sent to us? Like, would we have their names and information and pack it a few days in advance? Would we get the recording of their first interview? What do you think we might have ahead of time?
I'm not sure about the recording on the first interview because again, they're, um, they're afforded confidentiality, but, um, you will know who they are after that twenty-fourth. So I would say we would probably decide which four or five that we want to bring forward after that day.
It'll be on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, it'd be on the twenty-fourth.
So you would know that evening.
Yep. And literally Clarinda just forwarded everything to us. So I, I'm sure she just hit forward the five that, you know, we pick or whatever the case is. But like I said, you know, depending on where some of the people are coming from and, you know, that's making some of the decisions.
Brian, I don't think there's any intention of recording those interviews with the search committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think they're, yeah.
You know, that's supposed to be, it's executive session and it's confidential.
All right. I'm just trying to figure what we'll have to go on beforehand.
I mean, you can, you can get their resumes, but you wouldn't be able to get their, um, the recording.
That's fine. We'll work with it.
Okay, uh, we all set with that one? Okay, good. Moving on. All right, um, talk about some dates here in a minute, but, um, so the fiscal twenty-two budget has been compiled and, um, Todd has it all together. We have, uh, everybody's budget finally. And, um, so the goal here is that, uh, we put together the budget books this week with all the information, um, having to do with the budget information as well as the capital plan, um, which would be included, you know, as well. So, couple of questions. Does the board want to review this budget before we set the meeting? I'm, I'm sorry. I'll take that back. You're gonna get the budget books, uh, well, ahead of time, hopefully the end of this week or first of next week. Does the board want to meet as a board to review that before we meet with the finance committee?
What was the date we're tentatively meeting with FinCom?
Haven't set that up yet, Brian.
Okay.
That's what, we're gonna talk about these dates here.
Gotcha.
Um, I, you know, I've been in contact with Todd all along and there's nothing really crazy out there. So I, I could go either way. I, I'm perfectly content waiting for a meeting with the finance committee and getting it all done at one time. Um, but Brian, if you feel like you wanna, or rich, I, I can go either way on that.
I'm fine just getting the, the book, going through it. And then maybe if there's something that just makes my hair stand on end, we could suggest calling a meeting if there's enough time, but I'm, I'm okay doing it with FinCom.
Okay. So the, just so you know, uh, Wednesday night and I'm the representative of the regional FinCom committee. Thank you. Is, is, is with the regional FinCom committee to review the, um, the school budget. And, um, uh, every member of the board will be getting along with their budget book, the, the, uh, school budget, you know, as well, instead of big, big binder. So, um, so tomorrow night, so Wednesday night, we'll be discussing the, uh, the overall budget itself and the assessments and so forth and so on. So, uh, that's, that's number one. Coincidentally, O Colony is meeting the same night to discuss their budget. So we have both of them's now preliminary budget. So we'll make sure that that preliminary budget, it will be available to you and the finance committee, you know, as well. Darren Beal is the representative from the FinCom Finance Committee that will be attending with me on the meeting on Wednesday, you know, as well. Okay. All right.
Um, I, I think out of, I'm way more familiar with our budget, of course, than I am the school. So the school takes me a little longer to just go through, but, um.
Now supposedly, and I didn't know this until I just got the, uh, the agenda, that, uh, on February twenty-fourth, supposedly quote unquote, a ju, a joint town meeting with the Free Town and Free Town Board of Selectmen, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and the, uh, Free Town Board of Selectmen and the Lakeville Board of Selectmen with all members. Um, and that happens to be on the twenty-fourth, which is gonna be very difficult for you, Leah and George, because you guys are working on those interviews. So, um, I guess I'm surprised that they really should have done it this Wednesday altogether, instead of doing two meetings. You know, and it could have saved everybody a lot of time. So.
I'm okay doing a marathon day. I think our, our work we're gonna do during the day and my, uh, the, the, that joint meeting is in the evening, correct?
Right. But that's the day you're gonna be doing some interviews of a number of people.
Yeah, but I think most of them are gonna be in the day.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
But that's the one, one of the questions I have to get answered next week at the meeting on the six.
So, um, right now I'll tell them on the twenty-fourth. And, uh, otherwise I was gonna ask them for a different date, but.
Okay.
Is that okay, Brian?
Yeah, I can currently do the twenty-fourth.
Okay, good. Okay. So the, the other, the other meetings, which is our normal, you know, selectmen's meetings, I get some meetings with the planning board, you know, having to do with the, uh, Lakeville Hospital project. So those meetings are all locked in based upon the schedule and dates I gave you guys. So the question then, uh, there's one other thing that's gonna have to be done is that the, uh, Loon Pond Lodge, um, response to the RFP is gonna be in on the fifteenth. So I know that this is a priority and we want to try to get this decision done as quickly as possible.
Yep.
So I don't know if either the sixteenth or the seventeenth is available for either one of you to make that decision.
Okay. I can't do the sixteen because that's our big working day with the search committee.
Okay.
I can do the seventeenth.
Yeah, I can do the 17th.
All right. We'll, we'll pencil it in for the 17th right now.
Y'all, y'all can bring me a virtual birthday cake.
Oh.
It's a milestone, you know.
So.
It's like to be 21 again.
I don't count those anymore.
I'm gonna be the speed limit.
Yes.
Hey, that's the next group though for the vaccine. There you go.
Sorry, Tracy.
If the responses come in, um, at five o'clock on the 15th, is that gonna give you guys enough time to, to read through all the responses and evaluate them? If you're meeting.
I thought we were gonna do that on the 17th.
Well, typically you would read through them first and then like rank, because you're gonna have to rank them numerically. And then you would meet and then you'd all have your rankings. So I don't know if that's gonna be enough time for you guys to do that.
It is if there's only one response.
Right. If there's one response, well, you know. But, um, if there's multiple ones, I just don't know if there'll be enough time to do that.
Um, up to you guys.
I can, I can squeeze it in, um, but with all the s- search committee stuff going on, I'm not gonna commit Leah to that.
No, because we're gonna have to, we have to finish everything that day. That's why we booked three hours to discuss all the search committee stuff on the 16th. So we need to have those decisions made who we're gonna, there's no work that's gonna be left over for the next day. So, um, the next day after that, we're gonna meet is on the 24th to do those semifinalist interviews. So, um, I can do the 17th. That's fun. We, we have to get that too.
Um, it has to be the 17th because I can't do the 18th. I have the, uh, planning, we're meeting that night unless you do it earlier, but.
17th works for me.
Okay. All right. So then the, the last question is the, uh, meeting with the finance committee. Um, and it doesn't. And we're probably gonna need two nights. Um, we, Brian's schedule for the second, third, and fourth is, uh, up in the air.
Yep.
Which we just, we just said we have to leave the, we have to leave the third open anyways.
Yeah.
So, um, maybe the following week, uh, the 9th, 10th, or 11th?
That works for me.
That should work. Are we gonna do one or two at FinCom and then three nights with the department heads again?
Um.
Or those are the nights you're thinking?
I thought we were gonna do them all together. Maybe I missed, maybe I'm wrong.
No, that's, that's fine. I can't remember what we did last year. If it was just selectmen and FinCom for a couple of nights and then all the department heads, or if that was all one.
No, I think we had like, uh, just a preliminary meeting with us and then in came our first department head and we went right to it.
Okay.
Yeah. So do you have a preference on, uh, nights that week?
I don't think so. Double checking. That's the week of the eighth, right? 9, 10, 11?
Yeah.
Correct.
No, I don't see any, anything crazy.
Okay. So that's it. Uh, I guess that's the, we're all set. I think we've got everything ready to go.
What, what two nights are you thinking that, that week?
Um, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay.
Um.
As bad as I thought it was gonna be.
9, 9, and 9, 10, right?
Yep.
Normal time?
Yep.
All right. So we said today is the eighth. So our next meeting is the 22nd. 222 is Board of Selectmen and then that would be, so we're gonna have a Board of Selectmen meeting on the eighth and then two nights of a department head. Is that right, Tracy? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So three nights.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Well, that's what we had done last year was three nights.
Right? No, eight, yeah, 8, 10, and 11.
Eight, nine, 10, I thought.
Eight, nine, 10.
Oh, we're doing, I thought, oh, 9, 10. Okay.
Okay.
Are we going to do a meeting with capital expenditures?
I have to set that up, yeah. You and I can set that up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we really should meet with the capital expenditures committee and get that going. We had just gotten underway with that last year and COVID hit, so.
Okay. Um, all right. So that takes care of that. Okay. Um, also on the new business, um, Brian, I wanted to give you an update on the ADA survey.
Okay.
So, um, I did talk to, uh, Serp Ed and, um, they do have the resources available
Nice.
to do it. And, uh, I talked to the state again. And the state will give us until, uh, September 30th, 2021.
And that, uh, was it 30,000? That's still enough for Serp Ed?
It's been approved. It's been approved by the state and I have all the paperwork ready to go. So, um, Serp Ed is gonna let me, Serp Ed is gonna let me know when they could start. It probably won't be for a couple of months anyways.
Okay. All right. That's great. I did get my printout with all the slides.
Okay. All right. Anybody, any other old business?
So the APC, I'm meeting with, um, a couple of folks tomorrow. Um, there is going to be a public information meeting. Of course, it's in March with all these other meetings. So, um, but I will let everyone know when that's gonna be and they'll just explain all the stuff that's been going on. But, um, a meeting with them tomorrow. And I, I mean, of course, there's like 25 people on the APC work thing for this whole thing. So trying to get 25 people to find one night that's good for a public meeting. But, um, I've been talking to Jose from Lake Cam as always, willing to help us out to host it. So we can really make it public and folks can use the chat feature and, um, if they have questions. So I'll let you know.
Okay. Any other business?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To Leah. Leah, can you ask, um, if Taunton or New Bedford are there, can you ask who's gonna be picking up the water? Um, level readings? Because I, I, we never got resolved on that and I haven't gotten one.
Um, you know, I had reached out to New Bedford, but then I thought Nancy Yates had gotten a response that someone from New Bedford, I wasn't sure who it was, was supposed to be sending you those numbers. So I will get on that tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Because Nancy and them, they were working on it. So I'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else, uh, the board wants to bring up? That's good.
We're not done yet.
Motion, uh, to enter an executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter 30A, section 21, 3. Discuss strategy respective collective bargaining with the laborers, police, fire unions, if the open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chairman so declares pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter 30A, section 21A, 7. To comply with the open meeting law, Mass General laws, chapter 38, section 22F. Okay. And approval of the minutes of December 14th, 2020 and not return to executive session.
So moved.
Second motion.
Uh, any discussion?
Uh, no, I just need to find the next thing, but go ahead.
What? Yep. Right.
You all set, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
They are.
The camera, I. Okay. Thank you, everybody.